All right, everybody. Natasha's given me the high sign, so we are back on the record and we're continuing from yesterday in our Budget Committee meeting. So, we are at a point in the agenda where we are in the discussion part of it. So, Kena, I think you have new information. You want to start with you?
I do. So, thank you for everybody that, you know, parts up in the long, lengthy discussions that we had and that was received. When we left last night, something just wasn't sitting well with me and I thought about it all night long with a foggy brain and I did realize that we are, we will not be able to reallocate any of the funds that we have going to Sheriff's Department for CRIM-SIV and Patrol because those are either funds that are restricted by state law or by a county order. So, they're either the road department funds or the marijuana tax funds. So, we cannot use those for the assessor or the clerk's office.
So, when we saw yesterday when we were discussing the transfer in where it says GF Other Non-Departmental $742,099, that is the, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. So, that money is made up of $445,000 of marijuana tax money that was left over from prior years and projected marijuana money for FY '25, fiscal year '25, and a small portion that was taken from Communications and put back into, based on Commissioner Alcorn's plan, back into the criminal and civil.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to make sure because we had a lot of, a lot of discussion yesterday, a lot of stuff and, and a whirlwind of information. And again, when I left last night, something just wasn't right in my head and so I did a lot of research and thought into what we discussed and realized again that those are restricted funds that we can't reallocate out.
So, that leaves us still short for them.
Correct. Because we've really, I mean, we've put restrictions on tax revenues that prohibit us from using them for other mandated services.
By limiting, by restricting the marijuana funds which are legal to go to the general fund, by restricting them to the Sheriff's Department, that makes them unavailable for the other mandated services and the other mandated services are currently underfunded. So, it's a problem.
So, what I was asked though to provide that might put in perspective a little bit of what's mandated, what's not mandated, what the amounts is. Jay, you'll have to correct me or not, is animal control mandated?
It is, so is juvenile.
Okay. So, with the red ones, and sorry, juvenile and animal, those need to be read as well. But these are after the discussions and conversations yesterday and a budget that was presented by the sheriff and captain that we will go over, we have $6,179,186 and this is the portion of our general fund dollars that are going to these services. So, also please note, again, juvenile and animal control, these two need to be, need to be read. The red is the mandated services. I did put criminal here because criminal is a mandated service.
Civil.
I mean, civil, sorry. Civil is a mandated service as well, so we do have a little bit of a transfer going to them.
Okay. These are all, these are all general fund dollars and where they're being allocated?
Correct.
So, the only non-mandated areas that are getting general fund dollars are in white minus juvenile and animal control?
Correct, correct. Okay. So, when we did leave yesterday, the sheriff asked for a number. We provided them with a number. They came back to us with information for that number. That are the two handouts that I gave you. So, let me show this one first. So, the first is the Sheriff's Criminal, Civil and Patrol. The yellow boxes are what Captain Phil was nice enough to highlight of the variances for us of where those reductions were made. And the only other adjustment that would be made is obviously assigned vehicles and cell phones because we'd have less staff and the admin indirect services because of the reduction of FTEs. So, with that, this is the personnel roster or position roster that he provided that could be made whole by those funds. That's what I have.
Can I add some to that?
Absolutely.
Make sure that's on.
There's a line at the top.
Hello? It's on. With the cuts that were made, there's these eight positions left. In order to get down to the number, we were told yesterday, we had to cut positions, I think another five positions, four or five. But in order to get down to that number, finally, we still had like quite a bit to go, but we cut another position out and that, with cutting that position, it leaves $67,469 to the good. Now, that takes out my K-9 position. I don't want to lose that. If you guys can figure out how to fund that back, you know, add a little bit of money to the $67,469, that'll leave my K-9 and my K-9 deputy. Right now, I only have two positions, patrol positions with those cuts.
And the number that he is referencing is listed on your sheet right down here as unappropriated balance. This is what we had asked him to perdue was the 15, or 1,562,939, which he did cut that amount or provided that amount of cuts, but did leave him this amount based on what we had asked him to do for transfers or for our general fund requirement.
What would the number be to make that $67,469 whole?
For the K-9.
For the K-9?
I'm not sure what the, his rate is at this point, looking at this.
I'm going to disconnect because I don't want to show.
F-3 plus 5% for K-9.
Probably just double 67. It would be ballpark.
Not quite. It's not quite double. And Kena and I had had a discussion until things were kind of, sorry. Yeah. I know you guys can hear me, but it's not quite, it's not quite double. It's a little less than that. There's, there's some monies that we weren't sure about because I'm not sure how everything else works out, but there's in, and I couldn't take it out because, like I said, I wasn't sure what had happened in the other funds and I didn't want to underfund this and have it get worse. So, like in CRIM-SIV, Sergeant Gray, who's paid, paid out of criminal, civil, he's paid out of marine, and he's paid out of SAR because of his different duties, there's 100% of his salary in those, in these numbers, but only 60% comes out of this fund. And in order to withdraw, in order to get it down, with the changes that were made, I wasn't sure what changes were made when other cuts were made throughout the rest of the worksheets that I had. So, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't want to drop that down to 60% and find out that it had already been removed prior and the numbers are no good, so we left it at 100%. So, there's a possibility that there's 40% of a Sergeant II in there that could help make up some of that, but.
It's hard to tell.
Yeah.
So, and you said, he also get forest dollars too, right? Forest, marine, SAR.
So, we, we get, we have a grant from the Forest Service that is, that comes in as income to the CRIM-SIV Division, Patrol Division, and we also have contracts with the private timber companies that come in as income and for those things, we have specific requirements that have to be fulfilled and Sergeant Gray fulfills those requirements. Plus, he's also our, he's also, he's also the head of our marine department. He's a very experienced boat operator. He's like right now, today, he's over in the valley. He's instructing the drift boat school for the, for the marine deputy program. So, yeah, he, and he's, like I said, 25% of his salary comes out of, out of the state funds from the marine board, so. Plus, he does search and rescue, so I mean, it's, it's, so like I said, there's a potential that 40% of his salary was still budgeted in other funds, but I don't know what all was still budgeted in those other funds. So, that's why I left it in there.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Clear as mud.
Well, no, I can see it clear as day, but yeah. I just didn't have the answer to those questions, so I wasn't going to take the 40% and then come to find out it had, yeah.
So, the answer to what it would take to make them whole is $78,000 for that position.
The $67,469 plus 78 even?
Is 145,420.
Okay. In regards to that, just a question from me. The TLT revenues are no longer listed in the CIV, CRIM, PATROL. Where do those get allocated?
Those went back to TLT.
The 30%, I think, from my understanding, they went into general fund for general funded services.
Which weren't they supposed to go to the sheriff's office?
Yeah, so there was an order for that. I think we're putting that order back into place to get them into, to have, for general fund obligations. So, it'll be, it's dispersed amongst all the departments.
That's not what it was, what my understanding was it was supposed to be for law enforcement.
Correct. No, there was an order for that. And so, that's one of the things I think that we have to look at as an entirety is there's a, we had funds like TLT, Marijuana Tax, that we imposed our own restrictions on that I think ended up hamstringing us a bit along this way, which our general fund, their general fund dollars, that were self-imposed restrictions. So, to reverse that would require an order and I believe there is one for TLT coming on our next meeting.
But it isn't, hasn't been done yet, right?
No, it'll be on Thursday, the next Thursday.
A week from Thursday. Yeah, because my, always my understanding was 70% for parole, 25% to sheriff and 5% for admin.
So, wash.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's easier, I guess I got used to just seeing it where it was.
Yeah.
Coming from than meshed within general funds.
Yeah, so now it's just on the general fund revenue line items with everything else.
And it's still getting, 25% of it's still getting allocated to the sheriff.
Still, well, it's still getting allocated across all general funded, you know, at that point, it just, it got lumped into the rest of the general fund to be spent in all the areas, bolstered the general fund itself. It wasn't designated to any area, so.
Oh, 20, okay. I thought what he said was that it was designed to have 25% of it go to the sheriff's department.
It was. There was, there was an order for that.
And then now it's not.
And so, now it's in the general fund itself.
A county order, not, not state.
Okay, I'm, I'm just confused on, on what, why the order, it just seems, I don't know, I guess I just don't understand how we got there.
Can I help clear it up real quick?
Sure.
How much money is transferred from the general fund into the sheriff's office, including jail and dispatch, from the general fund into the whole sheriff's office? More than $400,000?
No.
The three?
Nope, into, including the jail and the.
For TLT?
No, 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 no. Overall, from general fund, how much money is transferred into the total between the jail and communications?
Like 3.5.
3.5 million?
Yeah.
That's way more than $400,000, so.
Right.
If the $400,000 went into general fund, we get way more money than that into the sheriff's office because all of it's operations of the sheriff. It's just not being designated specifically into the patrol function. It's going to the rest of the sheriff's office.
Correct.
Does that make sense? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I guess it's not quite, it's more like right at three.
It's still way more than $400,000.
Yeah, so that's essentially how that, I believe that's how that worked. So, so, so where do we go from here?
Any suggestions on the $75,000, Kena, where we might find it?
78.
If we do the, as a captain suggested, that 40%, do we, can we gain anything there and cut that down?
So, let me look at some of my documents real quick.
And the sheriff is correct in, you know, that, that dog, especially with these types of cuts, absolutely plays a role towards their safety and.
I need to add on that, that that dog was, money for that dog was donated by a local person, $14,000 plus in order to get the vehicle equipped. You're looking at 20 grand and if we lose that deputy, I can't give him the dog, but we wouldn't have no use, the dog, because we wouldn't have a K-9 handler that's been trained, so we would have to sell the dog probably and get pennies on the dollar.
So, we didn't, there were no adjustments that were made to search and rescue or marine, so 40% of him does live in the combination of those two funds, if that is the 60% one.
That's the 60% one. And then the other, the other question is, only 30% of my salary was in CRIM-SIV. The rest of it was scattered out between search and rescue, dispatch and parole probation. So, if, if the other percentages of my salary were still in search and rescue and dispatch, that money could also then, because we subtracted 100% of me out of CRIM-SIV, so that money could then come back in there to help fund that other deputy. But I didn't have those answers when we were doing it, so.
I got to tell you, cutting the captain position out really bites because he, he handles the call load, he does all the tower stuff, the radio stuff, and he's, and the budget. I assigned him to do the budget. He oversees the contracts for everything and I don't know what I would do without a second like the captain. So, we'll just have to play it out, I guess. And that's just a snapshot of the stuff that he is responsible for.
So, that could be the other percent, that could, between those two, if, and I don't, like I said, I wasn't sure, my portion, because as part of your solution, my position was out and I wasn't sure if those had been removed from those other funds or not, so. So, if we do remove them, then that adds some money that could go back into CRIM-SIV that's currently in the sheriff's overall budget. With the exception of the money that's in parole and probation, that would just go into their, into their balance to contingency if whatever portion of me comes out of there, so. So, that might be enough to get within a couple of dollars to leave another deputy on the road, so.
And a K-9.
Yeah, and a K-9.
That's a young dog too, it's got a lot of life left.
Lot of work, lot of training, lot of hours went into that dog.
I know we're making Kena do numbers right now.
That's okay. I'm a numbers, numbers person.
Let me, while she's doing that, I'm going to tell you a little story and it's a true story. It happened this morning. We get called a little bit after 8 o'clock this morning to a, a female that was deceased on a mountain trail, unclothed. She's 43 years old and myself, two detectives and a marine deputy responded and we secured the scene because we thought it was odd that it's possibly a homicide. But we secured it, taped it off. I don't think the OSP called you today.
Yeah, can we not give a lot of detail about this, please?
Well, I'm not trying to. I'm just saying that we're not going to be able to respond to help those type of situations.
Please don't give out a lot of facts.
No, I just, the facts are what they are, but, you know, I'm not getting into anything other than that, but bottom, my point of the story is, we're not going to have those resources to do that. I just want you guys to be aware of that. And my question yesterday about, you know, if you're going to try to cut the, you know, being that we're being cut for other divisions, if they were going to cut the DA, because you can't cut the DA, you've got to have that resource. So, and I didn't want you thinking that, that's what I was asking for, is I didn't want any more cuts coming from the DA as possible.
Okay. So, if we were to, if the captain is not in those funds, it would eliminate or reduce the SAR's balance by $18,000. It would reduce the communications balance by $36,000 and it would reduce parole and probation. Let me check this really quick because that looks funky.
There's also a percentage of me in the jail because I do all of them. Not much in parole and probation, but.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yes. Okay, so, so, okay, so let me go back. So, SAR would save $18,000. The jail would save $18,000. Communication would save $36,000 and parole and probation would save $27,000.
Way over the 78 we needed.
99,143.
The 27 from parole and probation has to stay there. It can't go back, it can't go to CRIM-SIV.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
So, those are restricted dollars that, that stay there.
Minus that by 27.
So, that's 77, no, 72,104.
What do we need?
78? 6,000. We need 67,496, I think.
No, we needed 78 to make.
And what do you have?
72,104.
Donate the rest out of my salary.
Yeah, we'll split that, we can split that among the three of us. So, we're, if we're, we're already, we're already at, what, 20,000 each, so split that between the three of us.
22,000.
So, 22,000 will, will cut our salaries. That'll, that'll save that position.
And then I just want to throw out there, so when you look at, when you have the, what's remaining up here, and I know you guys have been hitting on the employee to supervisor ratio, but you also have to look at what the duties each one of those supervisors has. Like, we're going to keep the lieutenant. The lieutenant's in charge of the overall patrol function. He's also our range master or our, he trains everybody in the sheriff's office in firearms. He.
Evidence check.
Goes to, yeah, he runs the evidence room. He goes to just as many calls as the deputies do. And so, then you have your patrol sergeant and I think Kena, when she did that, she actually put some little notes on there. We have a patrol sergeant that, that is responsible for supervising the daily activities of the deputies, okay? And then you have the marine, forest, SAR sergeant left that his responsibility, of course, is what's listed. He supervises, yes, we have one full-time marine deputy who's not on here, so we also have a marine deputy who's paid out of another fund. He supervises him. He takes care of the responsibilities that we have to patrol the forest and he supervises our 45 search and rescue volunteers and runs searches. I mean, those are, those are his responsibilities. So, even though it, it looks like, well, right now we have two to one, if you look at it that way, and, but they all have more responsibilities than just, and the sergeants carry just as heavy a caseload as the deputies do. They all have responsibilities that if you're just sitting there looking at it on paper, you can't.
You wouldn't know.
Yeah. It doesn't, you know, you don't know what it is, so that's, that's what it is, so.
I had a question when it comes to the jail. There was two positions that were open that we cut. Were those, somebody thought they were put back in. I don't believe so.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Well, so, I'm confused on that because the, the budget that was provided, there was, I've got so many budgets here.
Yesterday?
Yeah, the one that we.
It was increased.
It was, it was, well, we were only 144,000, oh, here it is, $144,000 shy of last year's full budget, so I, so.
I thought you were talking about the beds that were in the jail.
Yeah, so.
We weren't cutting any of those.
No, that's what I, that's what I was talking about. So, when I looked here, the, what we have proposed has the same. the, the, um, what we have proposed has the same, um, it's a, it's a sixty-four thousand dollar difference in salary regular. So, and then the rest looks like it's out of materials services. So it's only a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars than last year's adopted budget. So I don't need, know how we could be losing two positions. It would be more money than that if we were reducing two positions, so.
Sorry, I'm looking for a file for you. Um, that is because when I did the, when I received the original FTE breakdown.
We had two resignations, so we, I was on the impression that those numbers were given with those cuts.
So.
So these numbers that are gonna pop up, here is the FTE list for, um, the jail that we had received after second rounds of cuts, I think it was, or whatever it was. Um, so this is the number that was provided. Or these were the positions that were provided, and when I do the salary front, or the salary, it came out to more than one, what they originally provided on their sheet. So in order to fill those positions or keep those positions, I had to increase the salary to make it match. So the original numbers were incorrect. Original budget numbers.
So we are down two people then?
Yes. Because you can see these two positions are not there.
I just wanted to clarify that.
The lieutenant position is still there, correct?
Yes, these, these slashes were based on the proposal that Commissioner Alcorn had provided.
So.
So this was what was originally provided.
Right.
And these were the FTEs that Commissioner Alcorn had provided.
But, well, that was, that one came from, I think, from Captain Phil and the sheriff, write this up here?
This form did, yes. But when I calculated the salary, it came up to more than what was on there, because I'm checking their numbers to their budget to make sure that they're right. And this was the one that I, I found a variance in.
Okay, but, so one thing to keep in, or kinda look at, I guess, is, so in this, we got this yesterday, which was the proposed kinda idea. So if you look, the, the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed.
Yep.
Um, and then when you look at last year's budget, uh, it doesn't have a total sum. But the difference is, I mean, actually, in salary regular last year, there's more this year.
This was last, you mean last year is in twenty-three?
Yes. Okay, so this is twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yes.
So this is current?
Yep. This is.
Or this is proposed?
Proposed.
But it's, but it's still only six, it's a sixty-four thousand dollar difference, so.
Correct, because we've got a three-point-four percent COLA per collective bargaining agreement. We're not eliminating any other positions except for those two, which would drop at that percent.
Plus, most of those guys are, are younger corrections deputies.
They get the steps.
They also get a step increase. So most of them will see throughout the course of the year, an eight-point-four percent increase in their salaries.
Correct. That's why it's slightly less, because we're only saving a little bit based on, um, the COLA and the merit that will be received.
Based on the CVA?
Yep.
You mentioned that, um, that the two positions that were taken out because of move some money from marijuana money or the, was that money coming back into our bu- budget? Instead of where our positions?
Two positions coming out for marijuana money.
What's that?
Can you clarify? I'm sorry, I'm not, not under.
Well, yesterday, you took more money out of our, our account, not you took. I mean, it had to be allotted out over the count to cover the one going into, um, clerks and to the assessors. You, you're just saying today that, uh, that's restricted funds and you can't take that money out, so where does that money go?
So after speaking with Commissioner Alcorn, um, for this purpose, they wanted me to put it back into roads to pay off one, the hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of road funds that were used in jails in, incorrectly. And the remaining of the money to offset the road funds that were used instead of marijuana tax funds.
Okay. I didn't think that you could, was legal to put money from one account to the road fund reserves.
It's, it, it's not that it's illegal. It's the, it should have been the tax money that was used first, and then road funds to backfill. Um, and it wasn't done that way. It was the road funds that were used, and the tax money was, was.
But there again, like I said, it wasn't us that did that. That was.
And I understand that. I understand that.
So.
Totally do.
Okay. So, we're clear?
Anybody else have anything to add on that, or?
And with these adjustments, Kena, every, the, the other departments are all basically the same. There's no changes.
Correct.
In what we originally had recommended.
Originally as recommended, as in yesterday?
On the thirty-first, no, on the thirty-first, when the Budget Committee made a recommendation that was going to go to the VOC.
Um, all the other departments, yes, it's the same.
That, the, those recommended budgets are the same.
Correct.
But the modifications for the, that were proposed for the assessor and the, um,
Yeah, with, but we ended that.
They're impossible to make, because that, those would have been coming from restricted funds. And the fact is, there's just not, there's not additional, there's not general fund money existing that could fund them at this time.
But yes, the monies that, um, where we left off, um, before we reconvened due to these issues, no other department has adjusted.
Got it.
But Shelley shared with us yesterday that road funds could be shared, could be used for backfilling the clerk. Is that correct?
I'm unfamiliar with that.
I'm not aware of it, but.
I mean, we've always just heard the sheriff.
Okay.
And then, Kena, I hate to, but can we just get a breakdown exactly what will be taken out? What we're get, the interest that we're gonna use from the road funds? Can we get, I, I don't have that exact number.
It's in the budget from a road fund transfer. One million, one hundred thousand eighty, one, one.
That was the eight eighty and the four hundred?
Yeah.
Or three hundred?
Yeah, one.
One point.
One point one eight.
One point one eight coming out of the road funds. What do we take? We took three out of the road funds last year?
Three point something.
Yeah, three point, uh, three point one.
I can tell you.
So we took two million more out of the road funds last year.
We. Well, and there was no good interest last year. Didn't have that good interest.
Well, but we also didn't know how much money we had either.
Back up your bubbles.
So we couldn't, we couldn't have done what we're doing now.
Bubbles, okay. So last year was three million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, seventy dollars.
And that's out of principal, right?
So three point, almost three point two.
Out of, out of, um,
Yep.
The balance, yes.
And then twenty-twenty-two, we took two million. Twenty-twenty-three, but almost, took almost two million.
Correct.
And then, when did this, when did the road fund become, uh, able to be able to be used?
Seventeen, I think.
Seventeen?
No, actually seventeen, it was actually, um, before that.
Before the hell?
What Governor Brown did in seventeen was she eliminated the sunset date.
Oh, that's right.
Because there was a sunset date.
Is there any numbers for how much we used on those previous years?
Um, we.
In comparison?
Yeah, she created that document. It was, the total sum was like ten, ten million.
Ten million dollars.
Over five years?
Since seventeen, I think.
So like an average of two million.
Is this what you wanted? Yeah.
Yes, oh, thank you.
And what's the differentiation this year between us using the interest only versus the previous years? How do we differentiate? I mean, just road funds is road funds, whether it's the interest or the actual principal?
Yeah, it's still road funds.
Just does not matter. Are we, are we at a higher level of interest this, this year than we've been in previous years?
Yes.
Or making significantly more on it?
Yeah, interest rates went up, and also they were picking an, an amount that, they were picking an amount that would, that would not actively deplete what remains of the road funds, because you just said, I mean, it was, it was twenty-five million, and now it's, we're, you know, we're in a five-year circle. It'll be, it'll be, it'll be gone. And those road funds are integral to keep our roads open. We, we use it as matching funds for, for grants. You know, um, like Dan, I think, you know, I think you made a lot of money in timber business here in Curry County over the years.
For Hank, maybe.
Probably. Sometimes, but.
Some of your.
Do you think, I, I wonder how much of that timber came out over, over county roads? Probably ninety-nine percent of it. That's, that's our economy. And, and, um, if, you know, the infrastructure and the, and the bridges that we, you know, for example, we had to rebuild the Morrel Bridge up, this is up, um, Flores Creek, and it's way up there, and you're like, what could be past this? Well, a lot. That's where, I mean, it's timber coming out of there nonstop. And, and so we had, we had to do the match. And I think the match for the, for the grant, our side was ten percent of the grant, and we had to pay five hundred thousand dollars. Well, there's a lot of bridges like that in Curry County. And, um, and they're in need of, you know, we, we have to have money that, that, that we can use to, to move those grants forward. I mean, I, I suppose that, I suppose if we exhaust the road funds for, uh, short-term, uh, want, then we can shut down our economy, and maybe when we need a new bridge, we can go and, and, I don't know, declare an emergency and ask for, ask for money from, um, from, from the governor. I, I don't know how, I don't know how that would be received, so I don't think it would be successful, but, um.
Well.
Thank you.
In terms of that, what are you talking about, Dave?
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you.
Something was, uh, a person, uh, a person that I respect a lot said something to me that was kinda hit different today. He said, "Look, you're in a hole. The first way you get out of the hole is to put down the shovel." And the more, the hole, the hole is, that's put us in is, is the road funds. And the more we dig in, the deeper our hole gets. So the first thing we have to do essentially is stop to get back to the surface. And it, um, and in hindsight, if I was trying to put yesterday's lessons in today's to practice, had, in the past, had, had the previous, uh, uh, leadership put a moratorium on a cap that said, "We can only use the amount accrued in the road funds," we would be working with a much larger budget today. But they kept taking the principal. And if we continue that, we'll be in the same boat tomorrow.
Kept taking the principal recommendations from the Budget Committee based on funding solutions that they were going to do. But none.
Right, but.
None were moved forward.
But, you know, I, I firmly believe that if you don't, if we don't learn from the mistakes that we're, we're, we're working towards, we're gonna hand those mistakes off. And I think it's important that we understood, that we, that, had that been done, we'd be dealing with an entirely different budget now, based on the interest of more dollars being invested.
And you guys have taken steps, incredible steps, to regain that by the millions of dollars that were being spent on equipment that didn't mean needed. And, and, you know, and I understand that, so.
Yeah, thanks, Sheriff, because there was a, there was a, there was a lot of spending going on. One of the first things that I, when, when Sheriff is, I got in with, that was being worked on with this group, was they, uh, they pulled back five million dollars of spending that was planned by roads, in road funds. They took a piece of equipment that was, uh, just over five hundred thousand dollars and returned it after it was already purchased to put that money back in. They went and inventoried all needed equipment, and all unnecessary equipment got sold or.
Or returned. We actually returned, we actually returned several high-dollar items. The, the number you're looking at is, is hot, is substantially higher than it would have been if we hadn't exercised the, the, the fiscal brakes that we did by doing an intervention at the road department. We'd have been at twelve million or less right now in road funds.
And where do the road funds come from? Are they just from timber revenues? How does it, where exactly are those allocated from? Like, how do they, how do they get put into?
How were they generated?
Yeah.
The, off of timber receipts.
And so they, they, there's an opportunity for it to continue to rise?
No, so they were saved over, over decades.
Gotcha.
Um.
This is back when we could harvest timber.
So, so, so the timber receipts were going into the road fund reserves, and they were, um, being saved, um, up for, you know, potential disasters, whatever. And, um, so that's how that. So that's how that account rose, so.
And there were number payments on L O A P as well, right?
Yeah, there were seven, there were seven counties that were.
Now that goes to the general fund.
The seven counties that were very lucrative, nine, was it nine? Nine, I'm sorry, a lot of numbers right now. So nine counties that were, um, bringing in a lot of revenue from, from timber. And, um, it was enough revenue that they could save a substantial amount. So those nine counties were doing, were all kinda doing the same thing, and this is, like Jay said, decades ago. So that just kinda kept building up and building up and building up, and then all of a sudden, the spotted owl came along, and the government came in and said, done.
Endangered species act.
So that had a significant impact to this county's finances, because, um, now we're completely relying on that, uh, the property tax revenue, which is the second lowest in the state. And then, and then during that time, during that time, the other thing that took place was a lot of special districts were formed when we were, we were flush with money. And so, you know, there were areas, water district, fire district, and so those started popping up with different, um, different rates. And then we, uh, rapidly got to be the, the second highest number of special districts in the state. So when that timber, timber revenue was cut off, then we have a high level of, or a high number of special districts, and then we have a very low property tax rate, and that is the county's revenue. So, so the, the, the real key, the real long-term solution to this is getting those timber rights back. I mean, that, that, that's a game changer for this county. And, you know, we heard Commissioner Le Collinger talk yesterday about a, a possible option to that, um, which, uh, is absolutely being explored. Jay's been working, you know, from the ONC angle and litigation on the timber, uh, issues. And we're trying to do anything, anything as innovative as we can be to try to get that, uh, natural resource revenue back. And we, we haven't been successful so far, but we're gonna continue to try.
Forgive me for asking this, because I'm just trying to get a good picture of, and I don't want this to come across wrong. So how do we, how does the timber industry, which in the current state still support our economy, just because people are able to make money off of it and bring it in? I mean, where, where is the money that we're spending on the Morrel Bridge or whatever? How does that bring money to the county, other than just bringing finances into the county?
Well, so private timber companies, um, are, are lower, largest employers, right? So, so South Coast Lumber still does an incredible amount of business, but they were smart enough to buy their own land so they could harvest their own timber and not have to worry about federal and state lands as much. So, um, but the private timber companies are still operating, um, at pretty decent capacities, because they went out, they're harvesting their own lands, which are comprised in Curry County. So, um, they're still the largest employers and the, the, the greatest stake in our economy right now. So I think it goes, it goes, uh, the economy's based, it goes logging, tourism, fishing.
Still logging is still.
By, by, by far and away, it's massive compared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, I mean, but also, I mean, the, the, for the Morrel Bridge, for example, some of that, South Coast owns some ground up, up Flores Creek, but, but a lot of that.
of that, South Coast owns some ground up, up Floris Creek, but, but a lot of that timber goes north too. So, I mean, it goes, it goes to Coos Bay, but, but nevertheless, you're, you're generating revenue, and, and it's pretty much money. You know, the people who are logging, those are local people, all that, all that. But, but I believe we still have some federal, we have some minimal federal timber sales here and there. At least we did, for example, as a result of the, of the Chet Go Bar Fire, there's quite a bit of logging done there. That was, you know, that's why, that's why all the loggers were, were totally black for, for several years, because they were just covered with, with charcoal. And a lot of, a lot of wood got moved. And, but that's all federal, and, and, and that does reflect, that's what, part of the reason that we get the monies that we do. So.
But that's a good question, Dave, and it's a, it's a point that a lot of people historically here don't, you know, they don't understand, we're, we're at this phase in the budget, you know, and, and, and we're talking about, you know, these two financial cliffs, one being the immediate thing we have here, and then the second one being that money being gone. And when that money's gone, obviously, we, there is no discussion, right? I mean, it's, it's gone, it's, it's not coming back.
I was going to say, so a quick read of this statute, it does allow us to borrow from the road funds for, to replenish the election account. So it's another reason to, to keep the road funds. That money has to be paid back within the next fiscal year, and it has to come out first from any revenue received. So, but that's available, that's another safety net, so that we can make sure that we have elections as necessary.
Yeah. And we're already having to pay back future interest on what we're using in this budget.
Are we just discussing the Sheriff's House budget or the whole county budget? I was just curious where we're standing and what's the status right now. I got a major headache.
Not laughing at your headache, but yeah, we're, we're discussing it all, John, right now. It's, it's all on the table.
Yeah, I got a major headache too, Sheriff.
I got some ibuprofen in my office.
I just popped a couple Tylenol, I've got a couple more to go, so. And I know it's not, because I don't normally get headaches, it's, it's stress-related.
I mean, we're all thinking right now, and, you know, we're all looking for that magic money. And, and we've been over this and around, there's just no silver bullet here, man. You know, there's not. There's not. And, 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 and this is what we tried to express in those town halls. And this is the day that, when I said this day is coming, this is exactly what I meant. Exactly.
So where we stand right now is, is the sheriff's proposal for how they're going to do it. We could probably still fund the K nine, but we're still, the, the thing hanging out is the single position of the clerk and the one position in the assessors that needs, we, we agreed yesterday, seemed like it needs to be filled. How much money is that, is those two positions of that?
It was like, I wrote it down.
Problem with that is that, there's no, that money doesn't exist. You can't.
Is there a way to?
There's not, there's not a way to get it out of road funds. Yeah, out of, there's not a way. There, if, if, for example, the marijuana money wasn't restricted to law enforcement, then you could, then you could retool, you could, you could put more into patrol from the road funds, and you would have more money in the general fund that was, that was available for the discretion of, of the commissioners. Right now, previous administrations have, have tied the hands of the, of you people right now. And that's, that's, that's a problem in government, and it's generally, people, people like to do that when they're in government. They like to say, "I, I got it figured out, and I'm not going to, there's no way that, that you can, that you can change it. I've set, I've made some rules here, and, and when I leave, it's really hard to fix it." It's like, you know, it's like federal government where they do a bunch of executive orders, and they do all kinds of stuff, and it's really hard to unwind all that stuff. But, but in this case, in this case, the, the, the problem is, this is why that's a bad idea, because the current administration facing the current, the current needs of the county needs to not be constrained by the prior decisions of previous. So I would recommend that that order be removed as soon as possible, so that you can, you can make a determination with all the general fund monies at your disposal, and you have a tool to work with, with the road funds to the degree that you, that you decide to do it. But right now, right now, other people made that decision for you, and it's resulting in, it's resulting in other mandated services, essential mandated services in this county that are not being properly funded because of those previous decisions. So I, I would recommend that we unwind that as soon as possible. And, and then, do we do a special budget? You know, do we do a, do a supplemental budget? I, I kind of think at this point, we sort of have to, we have to, you know, bite the bullet and, and move forward. We, we need to, this, this has been an incredibly consuming.
Yeah, the clock is ticking right now. We've talked about the, the timeline. We're, I mean, we're late in the fourth quarter right now. We're, we're running out of time. Every day is critical.
And it's also important to understand that we're, we're already using borrowed money. Because again, we're going to have monies that we have to pay out for staff that are laid off. And it's not like this can happen on July one, because we have to work with the unions to work through that process, identify the positions that will need to go, and then the union has the bumping rights that can happen within. So it's not going to be a, a short process. So we really do have, we're, we're working on borrowed monies as it is, moving into this year. So regardless, first, you know, we're going to midway through, we're going to have to reevaluate everything to see how much borrowed money we had to use in order to complete this process.
We will be coming back to look at it as we go forward. And also, just, just so everybody understands, what, what the commission is going to do with every single department going forward, now that we have a qualified person in both the Treasurers' Office and the Finance Department, we're going to be generating monthly cash flows, and, and the county commissioners will be reviewing that, as will, as will all the department heads. But, but they'll be reviewed in, in the, I believe it's going to be the first, first meeting of every month, we'll be, we'll be reviewing each department's, yeah, we'll be reviewing each, each department's finances as we go forward, because, because.
Well, we can't have any mistakes.
Well, well, also, there's, there's a history, and it's not just, just, it's not just here. And, and it's not, I'm not saying it's anybody in this room, I'm saying that in some departments have, for example, where, you know, we, we look at, at, at the Planning Department from last year, there were a hundred thousand dollars in the hole. Well, they weren't living with, they weren't living within their own budget. So as we go forward, as we go forward, we need, every department's going to be living in, within their budget, month by month. And if, if it varies, that budget, that department will be, will be constrained. There will be action taken, because we're going to be, you know, we're, it's, it's like keeping your finger on the pulse as you go forward. You don't, you, I, I've seen various, I've been involved in, in several different, different public entities, and, 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 you know, when you're, when you're running quarterly cash flows, or, or, I've seen, I remember when I first got to the Port of Bergen Harbor, I want to say it was like every six months. Well, you, you've been broke for four months by the time you look at the books. So you do it, you do it by the month. If you're doing things right, you're doing it by the week. You know, you know where things are going, and you can keep your finger on, 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 that's how business works. You know, that's, if you're not doing that, you're out of business pretty fast. So that's, that's the model that we're going to be going for, and everybody's going to be, be responsible to be providing those numbers, and, and, and we'll be looking at them and talking to every department head about that as we go forward.
I would like to ask a question to the clerk and the assessor, if I could. Is it, would an irregular staff be beneficial to your departments as well? I mean, if we can't, if, if we can't come up with the money to fund a whole person, would an irregular staff member be helpful, or?
No. Because you're still going to have to train somebody. I'm pretty sure none of my staff would stay at half-time. They're going to want a full-time position. And I won't have the time to train somebody.
I, I would say no, only because our, you don't see everything until you've been in there for a year. We don't do the daily tasks, you don't see them every single day. You see one thing, you learn it, you might not get back to it till next year. So, I mean, just.
Well, that's kind of the same thing with elections. There's so many different types of elections, and each election has a different, you know, set of perimeters. And right now, like I said yesterday, you do not have trained staff in elections right now. I'm trying to get there, trying to replace the, you know, my previous job, but haven't been able to do that so far.
Thank you. So the only general fund dollars that we have available are, is that small contingency balance currently.
What's that balance?
Basically eighty thousand.
Seventy-nine. Seventy-nine, nine ninety-one. That was, that was my thought of irregular, I thought, at least, you know, we had something.
So I do have a question, too. Of the white ones we put up there?
Yes.
Are we talking, producing any of those that are not mandated? Or any other departments within the county that aren't banned?
So.
Question again, Shelley?
So.
Basically be removing money from planning, veterans, building, or?
So, I, I can answer a little bit. So the planning portion up there is a half-time person and a quarter-time person in planning. The veterans, just so you, so you guys know. Veterans is one point five F T E. Building, repair, and construction, that is, that is not even an F T E. That's money to keep our buildings functionable for a year, maintaining our assets. And I guess otherwise, it's communications. Marine Patrol, we can't touch. The only other money that we have that could be messed with would be communications.
You could mess with communications. There, there are alternatives that would, that you could, you could, you could work with other agencies and, and figure out a different way of, of doing that.
I'm just going to throw out, you can't do that tomorrow.
I agree with you. I agree.
You cannot do that tomorrow. Currently, it just, there's, it's not doable.
Right. It's, exactly.
It would need a.
Okay, so I, I, I'm going to throw this out here, okay? So, the marijuana money, it, you guys have a county ordinance, a order, a board order, whatever, whichever it is, it says it's to be used for law enforcement for the sheriff's office, correct? Dispatch in the jail is part of the sheriff's office. So you can take that four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, or a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, backfill communications or jail, and then that gives you whatever balance you want to use out of that, and not give it back to the road funds. There you go. That's my solution for you.
That's a, that is an option.
Well, if you were to do that, I, you know, they were road funds that were used wrongly, but I, I will say that probably the most egregious thing that I saw was the money that was just put into the jail, a hundred and sixty, whatever it was. So if that went back to the roads, and then, and then, I mean, I, I think I could sort of live with that. I think, I, I just, the, the fact is, these road funds are integral. And, and I don't, I don't, I don't agree with the, "I stole it fair and square," right? I don't, that's not, that's not it. It was a wrong thing to do. But at the same time, we don't have any, we don't have any other options. We have, we have these, you know, we need to be able to fund those positions if there's any way to do it. And I think, I think, I think Phil's idea is a good one. Maybe we, maybe we meet halfway in the middle there.
Gets us there.
Yeah.
If you take the one, one sixty, you put that back into roads, you're left with the clerk and, the clerk and the assessor needed, it was a total of two ninety-four between the combined. And then, yeah. And so that, that number's reached.
What's the marijuana money?
Four sixty.
So there'd be, I'd do it.
Yeah, so it would do it with, like, six thousand left.
Can I see a question on your face?
Two ninety-four for two employees?
That's salary fringe.
Salary fringe plus.
And indirect.
And indirect costs.
Yep.
Twenty-three, one, eight, two, four, seven.
Forty-eight.
So, that, that gets us there.
Sixty.
Mm-hmm. And it kind of meets in the middle, and then, and then we address, that we address the most egregious, I mean, the, 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 the position, you know, the sheriff, sheriff's department received the money. They weren't, and, and finance, you know, they were just doing their thing. That's, you know, so they're in possession of that money, it's not correct, but they didn't do it intentionally. That's, that's the scenario we have. Now, the hundred and sixty-two, that, that somebody just randomly moved into the jail, they didn't even, they don't know where it came from. They, that just happened. So, but that also is, that needs to not ever happen. So we need to undo that. The other, the other position is at least defensible, I feel like. And that gets us also to a point where we can, where we can move forward.
Like it?
That, that gets us, that gets us there with the clerk and the, the assessor.
Still a terrible scenario.
Just, just to make sure for my peace of mind, that leaves, leaves the sheriff, lieutenant, two sergeants, three deputies, civil, and admin.
Yes.
That leaves what you presented today.
Plus adding the one deputy back.
The K nine.
The reduction.
K nine.
Me and what?
So it's not, so let me clarify, adding the deputy back, because I thought that deputy was the one sergeant that was the point six F T E.
No, he was, no, he was still in there. He was in there one hundred percent. So, so we dropped him down to the sixty percent, which then freed up some money. Then when you took the rest of my money that was, that was reduced out of there, it made enough money to put that third deputy back up there.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
I just want to make, so we're at a total of eight F T Es instead of seven.
Correct.
In that fund. Okay. I just wanted to make sure of that before it went to maybe a vote or something, or, I don't know.
That is correct.
Yep. The money from Captain Phil, and then the additional money that we put in.
And then the sixty thousand, seven thousand that wasn't allocated.
Correct.
So it sounds like you have a plan.
What do you three think? Daniel, you've been really quiet.
He's a thinker.
He's a thinker.
I mean, from my standpoint, I'm okay with that plan. I mean, if the sheriff can live with that, and it makes the clerk and the assessor, to his, I mean, at an operational level, they feel sustained, then yeah.
I think everybody, everybody's going to feel this. And I think every department, you know, every department needs to feel it. Because, you know, every, you know, when we're looking at these other things, you know, they've been cut, they, the other ones have already taken huge, huge cuts. And it's going to be devastating for, 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 for the county. We're going to have to, and, and we're going to have to figure out how to make it work. But I, but I also, I also know that, that I, what I didn't hear today, I didn't hear one time, "We can't do it. It won't work." I didn't hear that. I've been hearing that every, I've been hearing that the entire time. And you know what? We, you can always make it work. It's one, one way or another, we're, we're going to move this county forward, and we're going to build. It's one, one way or another, we're, we're gonna move this county forward, and we're gonna build, we're gonna build back up. We're gonna, and I gotta tell you, every little, things are working better right now. You know, we, we, um, we addressed the, the problem, there was a, there was a problem when I first got here. Nobody could, you know, you've heard that we couldn't reconcile the books, you couldn't, um, you couldn't figure out, where, what department had which money, their deposits weren't being handled right. Well, when Kena got here, she wrote a new policy and she, and she instituted it. And that problem has gone away. And so now, I, I did a little research, and every department now, because the, the treasurer's office is handling it correctly, I think we're saving about a thousand bucks a month total between all the departments. Well, you know, a little bit here and there, it adds up. And, and that thousand dollars a month, you know, divided among those departments, that's just, that's just inefficiency. It's time wasting. People, department heads are spending hour, they were spending hours chasing something they didn't need to chase, and that's over with now. And that's, that's, I think, I think we finally got it done in, what did we, was that like February? I can't remember.
What?
When did we finally get the, the reconcili, to get the turnover, turnover things in place?
No, the turnover change took place...
In, no, in November, we started in November. And then, and then, but, but we've got the kinks worked out over the next couple of months. And that, but, but the actual getting, but getting things reconciled, that happened in April. So, I mean, again, we're, we're, we're running, we're, we're running at a deficit time-wise for a lot of reasons, but that the main one was, we didn't know how much money we had. So, we're, we're, we're past that now. And, and I think it's really, it's really important to understand that, that, that we've got the pieces in, in place to, to have this place moved down the road and eventually get, get better funding solutions. And I don't, I'm not saying the funding solution is, is solely, uh, the sheriff going out and selling a levy. I'm saying that, I'm saying that we figure out how long-term solutions, like for example, a timber department, working, working on things like that, that other counties do that work, and, and we make that happen. Maybe, maybe the ideas that Chris Pash was talking about yesterday, let's look at all of those things. But at the same time, those are kind of, you know, the idea of the, uh, uh, Patrick's idea of, of with Apache County, that, that's a thing that we can work toward, that's, we'll, we'll work toward. If those don't happen overnight, just like the, you know, just like, just like the captain was saying, as far as, we could, we could generate money out of, out of communications if we, if we make a deal with Brookings. But that's gonna take, that's gonna take working together and, and being committed to a, to a goal that's advantageous for everybody. And so we can do that, but what we, what we, we need to actually all be proactive in, in moving all these things forward. And that's what I'm, I'm gonna try to do, so.
So let me recap really quickly, just, um, of what we discussed. So first of all, it would be paying back the road funds of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand and some change, that the jail used out of the marijuana tax dollars, the rollover marijuana tax dollars. Adding one position, um, assessor position to the assessor's office. Adding a clerk position to, um, the, uh, elections and clerk's office recording. Sorry, I was trying to remember the name. Re-reducing the search and rescue budget, reducing the jail budget, the communications budget by the percentages that the captain was allocated across those funds, leaving parole and probation's funds, while reducing it so the rollover will be increased more.
Yeah, just to contingency there, yeah.
Absolutely, reducing it just so the rollover, uh, or contingency restricted funds in that fund would be increased. And that would then balance our budget back out. Oh, and, and when I'm reallocating those, those monies from SAR and jail and communications, we would be taking that money and putting that back into CRIM-SIV to, um, increase one FTE for a total of eight. Is that everybody's understanding?
Yep.
It's mine.
So if this was something that everybody agreed upon, then somebody would need to make a motion as to, um, what I stated, if we were going to remove or move forward with this.
Just wanna make sure you make sure you reallocate the rest of the marijuana into the communications or jail, whichever one, and then change the general fund in part of your motion. Replace the marijuana money, reduce the general, reduce the general fund contribution to one of those so that then that money can legally be put over there.
Yeah, all we would need to do is, 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 um, change the, the board order of putting those funds directly into that, and just put it into the, um, operations without restriction.
We would put that board order on the same meeting that potentially the budget approval would be on.
Okay.
Do we need to write this motion out and then read it? I think it can be as amended today.
I think, I think, I think the motion as stated by Kena and amended by, by Captain McDonald should be, should be sufficient to get us, it's all on the record, and we can, we can get the order, um, from that.
So move then.
Well, is that what you guys wanna do?
And one final clarification, that's also without touching the eighty, seventy-nine thousand contingency.
That is not touching those funds.
So still have buffer for...
A little bit.
Correct.
Uh, basically for union.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Correct.
And just a reminder, too, that the three hundred thousand of this goes away in December.
Yes, we will, um, have to, per year original. Yes, per year original.
That's all part of this, so there's...
Yep, yeah, a, and, and just for the record, yes, for, um, per year original um, use of that three hundred thousand dollars of future interest to revisit this at the end of, um, calendar year or six months in to decide where we need to move forward.
Yep, so the sheriff said yesterday, uh, public safety district may be the right path to take. Uh, former Commissioner Pash had a public safety tax that was discussed. That may be, one of those may be the best path. I think we need to sit down as soon as possible and start to, um, talk about what that looks like. Uh, we also heard from some community members with recommendations as well on, um, things we need to do ahead of time that might be impactful to that. All of that needs to be taken into consideration, and the clock is ticking on that as well.
Oh, you have a second? I'll second the motion if I can.
Okay.
One discussion. Agree with Ted that the process has been a difficult one for everybody. Um, I think, uh, if you look back, coming up with a plan and scaling this over a few years would have been, I know, but we're at the cliff, right?
We are.
And there's no scaling, so this is the process you had to go through. Uh, but I think, as you talk about the pain that is gonna be felt with departments and employees, I say this right, hopefully it's gonna hit, hit the citizens, save the citizens. This is gonna be devastating, and when the citizens feel it, I think that's what's gonna cause some change. When they walk in and can't get their real estate transaction recorded, as you point out, or can't get a marriage license, or whatever it's gonna be, that's the impact. And that's what needs to happen, the citizens to realize the situation there. I think this is gonna resonate with them.
And, and that's compounded by the, the problem that we have. We have people who are dedicated to their jobs in the, in the, in the departments that go out of their way to, you know, and that, so they, 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 they try to, they do their best to deliver with, with reduced resources. And, and so, uh, which we, I'm glad they're doing that, but it's just, it's, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a process to, to communicate it, it's not gonna happen overnight. That's why I think, I think that the six-month window is unrealistic, but we can, we can all hope. And, you know, maybe, maybe somebody will die and leave us a whole bunch of money or something.
But I'm impressed with my staff at the damasurers, just, I'm sure if I thought about this, just for responses and not having law enforcement available, it's gonna be an issue, and that's gonna impact people.
Well, the, I mean, the ripple effects from that, Dan, are felt with, with all of the other police departments in, in the county. Uh, the, the, the absence of the backup that the sheriff office provides, all of those things, uh, are, are gonna be impacted.
I saw people paying attention to the disaster.
But that, on that note, you know, that's, that's, I think, the big thing about being proactive and getting the word out before it's really felt by, you know, I'm on the volunteer fire department in Langloes, talking to Chief Bill, uh, about the situation that we're in. And obviously, we're in the same boat, you know, when we go to a call, we need, we need, we've been to some calls that are scary, that we're like, we're not going in there again unless we have law enforcement. But here we are in Langloes, farthest place away, a hundred percent reliant on state police or the, or sheriff's department. You know, we found ourselves in spots that, that aren't ideal. Uh, but creatively, way, like, we discussed earlier as far as going to those special districts, like, he's like, if people came to me and said, "Let's, this is where we're at," you know, I, I think we would find a positive response from our special districts. Not that we can give them, make them give us more money, but they, they understand how integral we are to them. And, uh, there's just, they, we gotta be really on it and not sit back. Obviously, we, I feel like we have such a good panel of people up here that care. I mean, what you guys are doing with reducing your salaries is, uh, I think that's almost getting swept. And that's incredible, you're giving twenty-two thousand dollars, that's a significant amount of money each, you know, and, and that's admirable, and it shows how much you do care. We gotta get the word out that we do, that we have people in charge that care. And that means, you know, town halls, but, I mean, let's be creative and get town halls that younger people wanna go to, you know, like...
Your food truck.
Well, that's what I mean, like, let's do a food, let's do an event, concert. And if we get the chance to meet you guys, to get up there and say, "Hey, this is what we're doing, this is, this is our county, this is Curry County," you know, and, uh, it's, I grew up here, you know? It's hard to see it being ripped apart.
Yeah.
And it's good to see people that care, but show people the emotion that you guys have and the passion that you have for this place. We can rally, we're a small community, big change can happen within a small community. That could change drastically, you know, it starts with one place, so.
Well, I appreciate your motivation. You know, I, I, I can appreciate a great motivational talk. But, you know, obviously, the, the moment is, um, is wildly, um, is big. And, I mean, we're talking, you know, it's one thing to take a salary to that reduction, it's another thing to, uh, propose eliminating your own position. Or, uh, having to, uh, you know, lay off folks that you worked with, uh, for potentially decades, right? And so, um, the impact to them and their families and what they've given, um, I mean, this is, this is, uh, this is all of that. And, and the ripple effects of that are gonna be felt for decades. And, um, you know, the, the people said, "Live within your means." And, um, I hope it's very well understood that this is what that means. And, um, and, uh, it's, it's, you know, there was a lot of people that didn't believe that living within your means was possible. And, uh, this is, this is all of that. And, uh, you know, I just, so I wanna feel your motivational speech.
No, that's why it hurts so much, 'cause there's, it's real, like, people that we love and care about. We're sitting here on this committee and, and making these numbers choices, but there's a huge help, human element out there that is painful, hurts me to, to be here in that spot.
Those numbers are people.
Yeah.
There's a human element, and so, um, you know, we just... We have to work hard. Working hard means educating people, like you said, doing the best we can, making sure that we're giving, providing the best efficiencies that we possibly can provide to the people that we are operating this county with, um, kinda like what Ted was mentioning, you know, finding out what we're truly capable of assessing, um, and, uh, and, and, and go from there, you know? But to Dan's point, uh, you know, it's, it's one thing to not, not to downplay, but, you know, the people will feel the situation about not being able to get something recorded in time possibly, or, or, or things of that nature. But, um, you know, the, the ones, the God forbid ones are, um, you know, when you have a loved one that needs, when he needs help, needs a call, and there's nobody who can come. And that, I, no, I, I, I mean, it's, that's, I don't think that's an if, that's a when, uh, scenario, right? And so, um, unfortunately, I mean, it's just, essentially, it's where, where we are. And it's definitely not the favorable scenario, so.
Is there any further discussion? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Herzog and a second from Mr. Bratton. So now we'll vote. John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dave? Nick?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again, everybody. I know, you know, you guys own businesses, your business suffers when you're here, your time is valuable. And, um, and this has been, uh, a struggle. So, thank you, thank you all. All right, I'll adjourn the meeting.